The United States of America are constitutional republic. Thousands have fought and died to create and preserve this greatest experiment of government through all these 250 years. We need in this 250th birthday year to be thankful for those who had foresight to give us this great nation. We ask your protection for all of those military and civilians serving this country today, here and throughout the world, and we ask you to bring them home safely. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. In all this, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's see. First item on our agenda, or second item, rather, is the approval of the previous session meeting minutes. These are from the council meeting.
We need roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Yep.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster is absent, and Franklin.
Here.
All right, with that done, we'll go ahead and move on to the approval of the previous session meeting minutes. These are from the council meeting dated July 21st, 2025. Do I have a motion in a second?
Make a motion.
Have a motion approved, do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Moving along to presentations, this is regarding the rate adjustments. We'll go ahead and turn this over to Administrator Wirt to lead us through this. You have the floor.
Thank you, I'll get that going. So, as we look at rates and fees over the coming year, what we've talked about is, through administration, is to bring forth the rate and fee adjustment each year, much like we look at our strategic plan and our strategic budget plan and all the information that has to do with it. So, this is a good time of the year, coming up on halfway through the fiscal year, to bring those things up. So, what you're going to see tonight is you're going to see each one of the department heads that has information about rates or fees that we charge for either utility services or a fee, everything from the cemetery to animal services. So, when we look at these, a lot of what we deal with is, these are enterprise funds. So, these funds, the fees are designed to pay for the service. So, of course, the challenge is the service charge versus the actual cost. And we know, and I'm going to have a couple of slides on inflation, but these service charges, like the water in the sewer and the solid waste, they've gotten to the point, they don't fully cover the cost of providing these services in many instances. Rising operational costs, inflation, infrastructure maintenance, all the parts and pieces that it takes to put these things together continue to increase, but we haven't increased rates. And what we have done, in many cases, specifically like with sanitation, is we've covered these shortfalls with the general fund or the capital improvements fund to do things such as purchase garbage trucks. When we run into those situations, we create, we are taking money away from another project, for example, fixing roads, to pay for garbage trucks. A lot of private industry, when they charge fees, of course, they cover all their costs with that. So, that is the goal with an enterprise fund, and what we're looking for tonight is discuss that and to get council's direction and desire with what we've got moving forward. We do have several slides as we go through that, so think of some of these things as we go through it. So, why is adjusting services charges necessary? It maintains, excuse me, our financial stability. We need to ensure these service areas are properly funded without relying, again, on the general fund or the capital improvement fund to cover such things as sanitation. We also want to keep up our costs with, or keep up with our costs, address inflation, our rising labor costs, and necessary infrastructure improvements. We want to keep our infrastructure up and running and reliable, and many times, that's required, like in water and sewer, that requires a large project, such as, as you guys know that we're in the process of designing and working on a new sewer plant, those rates have to be addressed to keep up with that and for the loan with the state revolving fund. We also want to look at a fair and sustainable approach, ensure that those who use the services contribute appropriately to their upkeep. So, you'll see some things tonight in sanitation, for example, where there's different choices for cart sizes for those folks that may not use or take advantage of the service as much as others. So, that's more of a volume-based sanitation rate, as opposed to everybody kind of a one-size-fits-all type of approach. What happens if we don't do adjustments? Well, of course, that's an increased strain on our funds outside of the enterprise funds, reducing flexibility for other priorities. Any deferred maintenance and service reductions, of course, due to revenue shortfalls, we will end up having to do it at some point. It will just be like kicking the can down the road, and it'll cost more when we get to that point. We want to have, restrict our greater future increases, what we want to do is look at this each year so that these increases are smaller, so that we're not taking large rate jumps each year. That way, folks that are seeing that on their bill, they don't see that big of a rate increase, and we're keeping it at an appropriate level. The more spent from the general CIP fund, of course, on those enterprise funds, the less there are for projects like roads. So, why do we look at inflation or the Consumer Price Index when we set these utility rates? And we want to take this into account more each year, is, of course, the inflation increases the cost to provide services. So, the fuel, the labor costs, the truck costs, all the equipment, all those things incrementally increase each year, so we want to look at those and compare those to what we're doing and take those into consideration. The CPI tracks price changes over time, so this is what we're seeing, what other people are paying for products, which means that's also the same thing that we're paying for to provide those services through the products that we buy to provide the services. So, steady inflation adds up over time. So, if there is a 3% to 5% annual increase in inflation, every, over several years, that can be a 15% to 25% rise in overall expenses. And you'll hear several rates that may have been changed, haven't been changed in three to eight years tonight. So, we have been taking and absorbing more and more of those costs, which then takes funding away from doing things such as the maintenance or the repair of certain items or plants or pipes. Of course, when we fall behind on the rates, that lead to budget gaps. So, when the inflation outpaces our rate adjustments, we're forced to delay repairs or defer maintenance, which we have had in some instances in our sewer with deferring maintenance, and it's catching up with us in a lot of areas, and that's why we're having to do so much work now, is because that, some of that maintenance has been deferred over the years, and we're doing our best to catch up with that, but we can only go so far with our current rates. We also want to provide predictable adjustments to avoid sudden jumps. Again, we want to use all these resources available to us to provide the best service that we can for our community and for our citizens, without going into the level of like what we're providing as a private industry, because we're not a private industry, so we're going to try to provide all of our rates and services at our cost, plus enough to, of course, buy a new equipment and things like that that you have to do, but at that cost as opposed to a profit level. So, if you'll notice, like in sanitation and other rates, or when some of the department heads will talk about their rates compared to other cities, pay attention to those cities that might have a private water or sewer system or sanitation service serving them, because you will see their rates are considerably higher than ours. You know, we'll have a slide, I think, and if I remember right, is in water, where there's a city with a private rate and a, or is a private company providing water, and we're still public, and the average water bill is about $25 higher a month than what we are proposing to even go to. So, we're still trying to provide those services as reasonably as possible, and it is no fun, I know, to look at rates, but it's, this point is, there is, like I said, a lot of slides, and the department heads have put work together to try to answer questions. So, this is a transparent process. You see what goes into it, you see what, why they're thinking what they're thinking, and they can provide you the information that they need and, or that you need to make a decision. And then we'll, the plan is to come back at the next meeting, so you have a couple of weeks to think on it, and we can take some direction tonight, too, as we discuss this, that we can bring you a good package back next week to look at for rates that is where you want to see it. Here's a brief year-over-year, again, that's just compared to the prior year, but if you look at that, how much the CPI, if you add those numbers together, and inflation has increased, and again, I mentioned, some of the rates haven't been changed since '22, or even as far back as 2017, 2018, things like that. So, you can see how much inflation has occurred since then, and the challenges that we have is we're paying for products to provide a service that we're struggling to provide at the rate we charge, if that all makes sense. So, this is also structured somewhat like we did the strategic budget plan back in January. I've got a slide that'll come up, and it'll tell you which director is up next. We're going to start off with Roger Waters from the cemetery, and they'll, each one of those departments will come up, use their presentation and give you some information. So, is there any questions before we get started?
Any questions, council?
Okay, Roger, if you want to come on up, we'll get started in the clicker, and the microphone are there on the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we're going to go into our changes here on our price structure and everything. The first screen that you're looking at, and just to, for me to kind of get you up to speed where we're at with this, that we haven't had a price change since April of 2017, okay? So, going back over the last five years, I've looked at where our wages are that have increased, our insurance costs, our retirement, equipment cost, where it's gone to in the last five years, where our gas and oil, these expenses right there, basically about $36,000 is what we've seen in the last five years. So, on this sheet that you're seeing right now is a comparison of other city-owned cemeteries, and then some of them are also cemeteries here in Sadee with Memorial Park and Highland that are in this also. So, the first line in that column behind all of these is the price of what a grave lot sells for. The second one is what the cost of a child's grave lot sells for in these other cities and towns. And then, you're looking at an operating expense on the opening and closing for a casket on a weekday, Saturday, Sunday, holidays, and then you're also looking at the cremation for weekday, Saturday, Sunday, and holiday, and each of them are in line right there. So, the first line at the very top, that is where we currently are at since April of 2017, with our grave prices and everything. And then, going into it, this slide right here, it starts off and shows us that where our current amounts are at today and where the new proposed amount goes to. And this is something that I want you all to look at in the next two weeks and give me some guidance, if you think this is not in line with where everyone else is. We're basically, we are still less than going across town and buying a grave there, and the opening-closing will basically match that price. But to surrounding cities, as far as Marshall, Warrensburg, Clinton, that have city-owned cemeteries, Marshall, we are still way, way behind them, because they have a private company that comes in and digs their graves and opens their graves. That is why that is so different when you look at that chart. So, to kind of put things in perspective with you, as far as our lot sales and everything, we sell, on average, for the last five years, we've sold 77 graves a year. And as far as our niches, the columbarium niches, we sell 15 of those a year, and we average 140 burials a year. So, that kind of gives you an idea of where we're at. But to break this down a little more for you, just in wages, in the last five years, because we have hired new employees that are starting at a higher wage as an equipment operator today, in the last year that we've hired some of these guys, it was higher than what it was five years ago. So, basically, in wages, you're looking at about $12,000 difference over that five-year period. And then, in insurance, just in our general insurance, you're looking at about $5,500, and these are things on insurance and things we don't have any control over. So, employee insurance, that cost has gone up $5,300. Work-comp insurance, $2,300. The loggers retirement fund, that's gone up $6,100. So, that kind of gives you an idea on those things. Then, as far as gas and oil, we're using around $2,300 more a year than we were five years ago. And I mean, you take a year like this that is out of the norm with all the rain we've had, normally by this time of year, we're slowed down and not having to mow near as much as what we are right now. That's hard to predict. Equipment cost, breaking that down, on average, the biggest equipment things that we buy every other year is a new mower, and basically, in the last five years, those mowers have gone up about $3,300 apiece. So, that kind of gives you an idea where we're at with that. The other small equipment items, rakes, shovels, that kind of stuff, that price hasn't varied that much over the last five years, so it's not a big, big factor in this. But that's kind of where we're at with that. And the niche prices on this, too, I've made an adjustment on that. You'll see that in there. Those continue, and I think those will continue to increase in sales because of the cost factor behind it. So, we are averaging, selling 15 of those a year is where we're at with that. And I think that, you know, we, the last niche that we put in was in '22, well, we ordered it in '22, didn't arrive till March of '23. That was a 64-niche model. We have currently, to date, sold 25 of those. So, that kind of gives you an idea how fast those are starting to go. So, at this point, does anybody have any questions for me to? Do you feel that you'd have to have an increase every year? I don't know if it needs to be every year, but it needs to be less than eight years where we're at right now, yes. And I mean, we can look at it again next year, and if we need to, and I think the steps will be a little smaller than where they're at, that where the proposed is now for a grave lot to go up in $100 increment right now, from the $550 to the $650, that, you know, we may be able to do it in a $25 increment. So, it's something that we just need to go back and look at and see where things are at. Yeah?
We have copies of those, of that data.
I'll send you out this presentation when it's done.
Thank you. Yep. So, that way, everybody's got everything to look at here and things, and call me if you've got questions on it, and I'll do what I can to answer any of your questions, so.
Counsel, have any other questions? All right, thank you, Roger.
All right, thank you.
Okay, up next, we have City Clerk Jason Myers.
Well, this is the first time I get to be on this side, so I'm going to talk about record requests. Our office handles fire and general records requests, and of course, P handles our own. This is kind of a joint presentation with myself and Chief Woolery. On the fire records, I went from '21 to July 21st of this year. If you look there on 2023, 2024, that big jump there, that's when we started having an influx of businesses requesting copies of their fire inspections for their business Until then, I guess a lot of them didn't know they needed them for their licenses, so we started having a big influx on that. 2025, those numbers are as of July 21, but I went through today, and I do have updated numbers. So, as of today, for 2025, we're up to 50 requests for fire records, with additional, it'd be 50 requesters, and that put it up to 10 and a half hours that have been billed with the dollar amount that we've collected of 261. Next one, general records requests. Again, you see a little bit of an influx there in '23, but 2024, we had 159 requests that were submitted, with 72 requesters, with hours billed of 67 and 1/4 hours, and those hours billed come from anywhere, from IT, finance, HR, code enforcement, it involves, you know, any of our departments. And the year-to-date, those numbers there, too, have changed. So, this, so the year-to-date, this year, number of requests were up to 104, with 30 requesters, which put our hours billed at 72 and 3/4 hours. So, we've had a lot of repeat requests in the last couple of years, so that's kind of pushed our numbers up from previous years. On police records, I got these numbers from Chief Woolery. Theirs, again, have consistently gone up on that, and if you have questions on these, Chief will be able to answer those for you. So, with all that said, there's a sunshine law allows custodians of record to charge for time spent duplicating records and for research time filing the request. The charges cannot exceed average hourly rate of pay for clerical staff, and charges for research cannot exceed actual cost of research time. And records request fees have not increased since 2017. Salary scale, of course, has been adjusted several times, so we're requesting a fee increase to align with current salary scales for both the general and public safety sides. So, right there, current rate, police is charged in $24.75 an hour for research time, and for fire and general records, we're currently charged in $23.60 an hour. And proposed rates, we're looking at $32.22 an hour for police and $29.67 for the other. Of course, both of those rates, they're based on current salary base rate and benefits, and we can also charge $0.10 page per the sunshine law. So, that's what I've got. Any questions for me?
Any questions, council? Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Good job.
Jason. Up next, we have Community Development Director and CBO Brian Kopp.
So, this matrix, it's out of the, out of our ordinance. There's a number of different ordinance numbers that are referenced in here, and the last date of modification on a number of those ordinances, it just, it varies anywhere from 1999 to 2024, and so there's a range of, just a variation of when these would change last. But to go through the highlights would be the changes or the new proposed totals. Anywhere that there's a public hearing, you'll see the change has been bumped up to, proposed change has bumped up to $500. And that is to literally cover the cost of setting those meetings up, to say that the certified mailing cost has gone up significantly. We're just over $10 per letter, and our average cost per item, let's see, just on P and Z, we're spending, on average, about $200 per meeting just on mailings. And then we've got the, I'm sorry, the certified mail. And then we've got the advertising staff cost, printing costs. So, we're attempting to recoup that cost of having those meetings by moving the public hearing meetings up, cost up to $500. Also, there's the addition of an annexation fee. We haven't had a fee for that, and again, it's something to recover the cost of staff time, meeting time on that. The floodplain development permit, we haven't had a fee for that, so incorporating those, and then an extra inspection fee. And just a bit of a fine point on that, a lot of times, a construction project may fail for the same item. So, we go out and do the initial inspection, and they fail. We come back for a reinspection, and the exact same item fails again, and so, sort of common practice in the industry is to have a reinspection fee to say that if they failed twice for the same thing, not that there was something new found, but the exact same item, that there's some fee that they have to pay to get a third inspection for the same item. And so, that's what that is there. Getting into the building permits, trying to, trying to uniform the fee structure for building permits, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And so, right now, there's a fixture count for mechanical, fixture count for electrical and plumbing, and trying to eliminate that, and make it a basic calculation for all of those fees, to say that we have a base fee, then there's a charge per cost of construction, and that would be uniform across building, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits, with a few exceptions. Under electrical, temp services, a temp, temporary meter wouldn't change, those will stay at 25, but then the permanent meters, if they're just pulling a meter inspection, we'd cap those at 50, regardless of the size. So, as an example, on a mechanical permit right now, if someone was going to, if someone was to pull a mechanical permit right now, and their total cost of construction was $10,000 or less, their fee right now would be $95 if they got one today. Under this structuring, this differently to where we have a base fee and then it's $6 per thousand, a mechanical permit where they have $10,000 worth of work would actually be $56. So, for the lesser projects, it's a little less expensive. That catches up as the project cost goes up to where the multiplier is based off the total cost of construction. And that multiplier comes from the ICC, they have a formula that that $6 per thousand is based off of. So, again, the proposal is to provide a uniform method for building, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits. And then, the plumber certifications, right now, this is the $5 fee for a master plumber and $1 fee for the journeyman plumber, that's based off a state statute from, I believe, the '40s or '50s. We have a board for those, and so, we're proposing to change that fee, just make it uniform up to $25, regardless of the master, journeyman, plumber, there's no change in the amount of paperwork, the amount of time or the staff time, so that fee could be uniform. Demolition permits, there's, you know, we're incurring staff time, more staff time on those. And again, that fee increase to 100 is just to cover the cost for staff to process those and to do the inspections, and then the appeals process also, again, just trying to align with current cost here. And as we go through the manufactured mobile homes, there's a fee in there, the temporary mobile home park permit, that's ordinance section 3426, actually exempts any fees from being charged, so we can actually eliminate that one. That ordinance section says that there's no fees to be charged for that, it would be an act of council to approve that. And then, the noise generation permit, there's a zero fee in there, so while I was in there looking at the fees, I thought we'd clean that one up. If we're not charging anything, I'm not sure the... I'm not sure the, if we should have it on the books. So I put that in there as deleting that one. And then the sign permits, again, just a slight increase there to accommodate for staff time and the cost of doing business today. Are there any questions?
Which, which fee did you say there was an ordinance on to go back to zero? We have an ordinance, I think you said 3426?
Yes, sir. The temporary trailer part of, yeah, ordinance section 34 dash 26.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Up next, we have Director of Public Works Operations, Justin Bray.
All right. So before I get started in the numbers, the last rate increase that we had was in 2022, we went from 18 to 1950 for residential trash. Keep that in the back of your mind. So this is our current rates for all of the services that we offer in sanitation from residential trash all the way to our 30-yard roll-off container rentals that we have. The average cost per container disposal at the landfill only, this doesn't include fuel, this doesn't include labor or anything else, is just landfill charges that we have on average are as followed. So I'll back up and just kind of do a compare back and forth. So for our two-yard dumpster, we're charging 30.20 for us to place it. It's costing us on average $40.91. So we're losing on that and on down the road. The more weight that we're able to encumber inside the containers, the more that we're having to pay at the landfill. So far this year, this is our customers for all of our rentals and pickup on demand. We have 7,724 carts, or I'm sorry, customers with an average of two carts per household. We were able to convert the data that we have just from the landfill and convert that to gallons and base our rates, what I would like to see our rates be, into a cost per gallon. So for a 95-gallon cart, it is costing us right now roughly $27.06 per stop. 65-gallon cart is 18.51 and a 35-gallon cart would be 9.97. Thank you. For example, these are our containers, our carts. So we have the 95 on the right, the 65 on the left, and the 35 in the center. So the idea that what, what we'd like to see is we'd like to go to more of a usage based rates. So the people that are not contributing as much into the trash, into the landfill bill can lower their, lower their bill and be able to have a smaller container to be able to offset what they have to pay versus what we're taking to landfill. Here's some pie graphs to kind of just show our in-house costs and our monthly disposal costs and show where we're, we're spending the money at. This is all of those combined into one. So it'll show you how much we're actually spending at the landfill versus staff and fuel and everything else. Something to note here is we do not currently have a capital improvement fee on, associated with our fees for sanitation. That's something that I would like to see. The most recent purchase of our garbage trucks, we actually had to buy a borrow against the general fund, which was about a million and a half dollars that we took out of the general fund to be able to keep our services going. So here's the proposed rates where I would like to kind of see them. So 35-gallon cart at 15, a 65-gallon cart at 19.50, a 195-gallon cart at 22.50. If you have two carts, which most of the residents in Sedalia do have two carts, so still kind of offer that, a package deal would be 26. So they would maintain two. And anybody that had two or more at three, they would be charged 26 plus the original 22.50. The reason that this is such a big slide at this rate is that a 95-gallon cart, which is, most of our residents have, there are several residents that we have and customers that we have six, seven, eight containers or carts placed at those residents. So they are contributing a lot of volume to our trash bill, just then charging us back from the landfill. I would still like to offer an elderly discount at $2 per whichever cart that may be. Do y'all have any questions?
Can I ask that those containers be brought up so that those that are here in attendance can actually see what it is that you're talking about?
I'm on it.
Justin, can you explain the placards that you have on each one of those?
So each one of the placards is what we are being charged per month at the landfill.
Okay.
So this is, if we have two, that's what we're being charged per container at the landfill or what we would be charged.
So am I correct that right now, let's say a senior household would say they don't need this big one that everybody else has, they can use the smaller one?
Yes, ma'am.
They will be paying less?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's what it's going to cost. So we're actually giving our, our citizens the choice of what you need as far as your household is concerned. And then we have those that, that particular in the middle trash can is not big enough. So you're going to go to this one?
Yes, ma'am.
And you can do that? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's your proposal, correct?
Yes.
That's the proposal going forward?
So if we have, if we have a senior citizen that has a 95-gallon cart and they're paying 17.50 right now and they're only contributing three Walmart sacks per week, they could move down to a 35 and only pay, I'm sorry, I have to go back. I think it's 15, 15 plus an elderly discounts would be 13. So they'd actually be paying less than what they're currently paying. But again, it is volume-based.
Are all three of these cans available today?
Yes.
Okay. On your dumpster?
We just do not have in the fee schedule for the 35. I do have them on hand, we just do not have them on the fee schedule. We have 65s and 95s.
Okay. And one more question on your roll-off dumpster fees. When you said there's a flat rate to set them and then there, we pay by the weight for disposal at the landfill, does that, does that fee come from the city or does it come from the person who ordered the dumpster?
So our, whenever we set the, we have a flat rate for the container. There's no overages. Our, all of our competitors have a flat rate for the dumpster rental, plus they have most likely a two or three ton max in those containers. They will backcharge on the, on the backend for it. We will not do that.
Okay.
I hope that kind of answers.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Are the, are the blue containers 65 gallons?
There's a mix of 65s and 95s. They were all the recycling and once COVID hit, we did away with roadside recycling. So we can still utilize those for trash. On in the future, the plan is to try to bring back some sort of function of recycling. But at this current time, that's not the plan.
When are you asking that this actually be implemented, put in place?
As soon as possible.
Well, I just want to say too, that we have no jurisdiction on what the landfill charges. I've been approached by several people telling us, well, the city is what's in charge of landfill. And I told them, no, we have nothing to do with that. If they want to raise their rates, they raise their rates.
There's a, to, just to interrupt, there is several different fees that also go along with not just your tonnage. We now have a Pettis County tipping fee, we have state, we have DNR fees. So all of those go against the initial ton and then you pay per ton after that. So if the average citizen were to bring in one ton, they would pay, not our contract pricing, but they would pay, I don't know, I'm just going to throw a number out because I honestly don't know, but $80 a ton. Whereas our, our rates are about 56 a ton right now. So we, because we put so much volume and we're picking up so much volume, we do get a discounted rate. So that's, that's another side point. There are several, several other associated fees that go along with not just the landfill fee.
Well, that's what I was saying. I just want everybody to understand that we have no control over the landfill.
Yes, sir.
We pay what, and we pay the same amount, the city pays the same amount that if you load up your truck and go out there and dump it yourself, you're going to pay the same amount. So they don't give, they don't give us a volume discount. It's the same amount.
I have one more question for you. Do our current trucks have the capability of picking up the smaller cans with the arms?
Yes, sir. All of these, all of these carts have the RFID scanners in them, in the handles, which all of our carts currently that we have out on the, out on route have the RFID scanners. Bill, just to jog your memories, this is for the account tips. So every time that our trucks tip one of these carts, it takes a picture of the can and it's associated with the address. So it mitigates all of the other complaints that we were, a lot of the complaints that we were getting. So. But these are, these are out on route and ready to go. This is what we are currently paying to dispose of this can.
I understand that, but maybe it's true, but is it 18.51 per month per can?
The idea is to have, I'm sorry, let me move, let me figure out where it says. The idea is to add a flat rate of 12. I'm sorry, that's not on there, but a flat rate of 12 for the 35s and the 65s. The only thing that would be a, a big jump would be the 95s, just because of the volume. So the 35s and the 65s would be a flat 12. For two cans. And then the third can would be the original.
The 95, is it two for 26 a month? Is that what it says?
Yes.
All right. Any further questions, Council? All right, very good. Thank you, Justin.
And our final presentation is Director of Utilities, William Breckin. He's going to cover water and wastewater.
Evening, Council. Save the best for last is everybody's favorite. So as everybody knows, we operate two essential utilities, the water and the wastewater systems. These operate entirely as a enterprise fund, so no funding from the general fund is going into them. So we have to bill enough to pay for the complete coverage of all the operations in the fund. Some cities, as opposed to doing the, doing a rate increase, will think it's a good idea to sell out to a private entity. And most times in that case, the, the bill will double and everybody acts shocked when that happens. And we're trying not to let that happen here. So over the last several years, the price of all the parts and equipment that we use has went up exponentially. And all this is extremely vital for maintaining the system. Our, our combined fleet has been showing its age. There hasn't been very many replacements in our fleet in the last 10 years. Really just a handful of vehicles have been replaced. The typical lifespan of this equipment is 12 to 16 years for trucks and 12 to 16, or eight to 12 for the heavier equipment in the commercial field. So in order to maintain our current service levels, we have to replace three to four per year with a 6%, 6 and a half percent average increase. We have one truck in particular right now that uses around eight quarts between oil changes, oil. And then we currently have, one of our dump trucks has been parked for about a year because the repair bills were getting really high and the transmission went out. So we're working on replacing it. There's several others in line that also are going to be needing replaced very soon. So over the last several years, we've, we were having trouble keeping staff with water and wastewater. And some of it was due to COVID, people leaving, but a lot of it was due to, most of the local industries raised the rates of pay and we just weren't keeping up. And that's in comparison to like local construction and the factories, which is where most of our employees are going to be coming, you know, comparing, getting a job with the city to working at, whenever they have their choice of where they, where they decide to work. So we incentivize the pay scale so that they can, they can get certifications and their pay level will go up based on their level of certification in their field. And this has helped quite a bit with employee retention, but it also costs the city more. But we think that we're getting more value for our money by keeping employees around longer and we're, we have a more skilled workforce that way. So they're quicker to respond and know what they're doing with making their repairs that they have to make. So what we're asking for this year is a 5% water rate increase in water and a 7.5% in wastewater. And I don't, I don't think that's enough to cover completely and catch up to where we need to be because there's been a lot of deferred maintenance at our plants. And we're kind of seeing that now where we're spending a lot to maintain our, both our drinking water and our wastewater plants. And also, we'd like to get to a point where we can, we can proactively replace lines underground. And we haven't been doing that. We've been more reactively replacing spots that have failed, which works, but we end up spending more in the end. We actually have a pretty comprehensive list of areas where we've had a lot of water main breaks and sewer collapses. And we've camered a lot of the lines and tested. And we would like to start working on some of those areas and replacing and getting ahead of the problem. There's a lot of infrastructure in the ground here in Sedalia that's been in the ground for 150 years and never has been replaced. And we need to start working on that. This will be, we, we figured what a 5,000 gallon a month bill would be before and after, like at the current, and what it would be with the increase. So it's around $6 a month increase, a little bit less for the average customer. And that'll vary depending on, you know, how, how much they use. And then this is a comparison, we just used Marshall's study because it made, made it easy. They're kind of the two local communities that are similar to ours. Warrensburg does have private, private water. So that's where that, that amount's so much higher for them is because they're getting water service privatized. And Marshall, Marshall's showing a little bit behind us. I don't know where they're at with their rate increases, but that's where that's going to be. All right, questions?
Any questions, Council?
I know that we apply for grants in many of the different departments. Are there grants out there that the wastewater department could apply for to help offset some of this cost?
We are currently applying for whatever we can that comes up. I know we have one now, but we're going to dredge some of the basins at the wastewater plant, which is a pretty large amount of money. We recently had one to cap one of our wells at the water department. But yeah, as, as we see them, we apply for them as quick as we can, rapidly, you know?
Yeah, we did receive the, the grant from Department of Natural Resources to dredge two of the EQ basins and it's over $3 million, I believe, to do that. So it's, it is a substantial grant. And then the process that we are going to apply for, for the, for, to rebuild the plant is a very low interest loan, which is kind of considered somewhat of a grant with it because it'll provide that large amount of money at a very low cost and interest to us over, over the years. to us over, over the years, so that is many times the what we see in the grants for water and wastewater.
I just wanted to make sure that we were covering all of our ground, because, um, our, our water bills that we receive now are quite substantial, and so in knowing that we're going to have to do some type of an increase in order to take care of all of the work that still needs to be done on old pipes and everything, I wanna make sure that we've got other entities that could help us with that.
Absolutely. These are, these are the things that hurt the most, and I know, like in, it was twenty twelve or twenty thirteen, we had the, uh, DNR stepped in and told us that we had to do a bunch of replacements in the wastewater system, and that led us to where we had to do this substantial increase, and that's where we don't wanna be. We wanna try to do these smaller ones on, and maybe not even five or seven and a half percent, but we gotta start somewhere to get caught up and then do smaller increases early, to just kinda keep up with inflation so that we can get ahead of some of the problems that we've been having, so.
Was the, was the rate increase that you showed, I think it was about six dollars a month, was that for water and wastewater, is that your combined percentage?
Yeah, that eighty-seven twenty-five would be a total bill for five thousand gallons a month, uh, per customer.
For the end user, why is the, uh, wastewater always more expensive than the water?
It absolutely costs more to get rid of it than it does to produce it. Well, water, which is what we're on, is inherently clean, so you just have to add a few things to maintain it through the system, so you don't end up introducing something bad through your water system. Wastewater, you never know what's in it, so it comes to the plant, and whatever's in it, you have to treat it, make it safe for the fish and the people's home in the creeks, so. And also, uh, some of it is that the wastewater system's often overlooked, um, it's not, you don't see it, you don't, if there's a hole in the line, you don't necessarily, I mean, you don't have water blowing out of it and people calling, it's, it's something that people don't see, so they don't think about, and, and so then the system's in worse shape than a, you know, a pressurized system such as the water, so it needs more work.
What's involved in that treatment process for wastewater?
Uh, there's a lot of mechanical operations that go into it, um, different steps in the process, uh, lots of pumps and moving the waste and water around, um, which is high maintenance and hard on, hard on equipment, you know, just to make sure the water, it's corrosive, it has foreign material in it that's not waste, rags, and, you know, other debris that is damaging the pumps and.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? All right, thank you, William.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions that, uh, you guys wanna bring anybody back up and ask after, after a few minutes?
I did have one more question, it was, um, about the fleet vehicles, and we had forty-one, do we know how many we've replaced this year?
I believe we replaced four this year in water and wastewater.
The question is, William, how many fleet vehicles have we replaced year-to-date?
So for this year, we did, uh, two pickup trucks and a dump truck for water, and one heavy truck, uh, M fifty-five hundred, and those are moving some of the, with the, with the cost of the repairing things at wastewater, there's a couple of those vehicles that got moved to wastewater to get rid of some of their fleet that wasn't operating anymore, such as the, the water dump truck, the current one, got moved to wastewater and then replacing with the new one on the water side. Um, the water, water crew, um, has more personnel and does more day-to-day maintenance, so we thought that they would need the, and it helped out the budget for wastewater. Uh, we did four vehicles last year.
Anything further, guys? All right, thank you, William.
Thank you.
Uh, the last I would have is if you have any direction on what you'd like to see us bring back next week, uh, with that, um, as you, as you think about it to, uh, to, to address these rates.
Do you, does the council have any direction off the cuff?
I think I'd need, I'd need a little more time to process some of this, to come up with some direction.
Okay. Okay. Everyone else concur?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, with that, we'll move along to the public comment portion of the meeting, this is relative to rate adjustments. The council will now open the floor for public comment concerning the proposed rate adjustments. Speakers are asked to state your name and address for the record, you will have up to three minutes to make your remarks. Please be advised, all comments must be germane to the topic of proposed rate adjustments. Comments that stray from the topic will be ruled out of order. This is a, a public comment period, not a dialogue with the council. Once all registered speakers have had an opportunity to comment, or a lot of time has expired, this portion of the meeting will be closed and the council will proceed with the next agenda. Uh, City Clerk Myers, if you go and call the first speaker, please.
I did not have anybody sign up, ma'am.
Okay, we had no one to, to sign up. The, uh, for anyone that did not sign up, or anyone who has seen the presentations and does have some input that they wanna add, I'd advise you to reach out to your representatives here, your various board representatives, and talk to them. All right, moving along to our roll call of standing committees. Up first, we have Finance Administration, Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you. Tonight, we have only one item to consider through the Finance Administration Committee. Um, it is, the Cemetery Department is requesting a budget amendment to replace current, a current backhoe, which is a two thousand and three model that has exceeded its service life. The machine is experiencing frequent mechanical and hydraulic issues resulting in ongoing maintenance costs and reduced operational reliability. Um, the backhoe plays a critical role in cemetery operations, including grave digging and filling, snow removal, material loading, general site maintenance. A sortswell bid has been received from Martin Equipment of Columbia in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which includes a trade-in value for the old backhoe and cooperative procurement pricing, which meets our purchasing policy. Um, this purchase is also aligned with a future improvement efforts planned for Crown Hill Cemetery. These improvements were sparked by a generous offer from Ms. Sue Heckard to fund a new committal shuttle, shelter. More details on this project will be provided as plans develop. I believe Roger, I believe that at the last finance and admin meeting, we were looking at a different vehicle, and then we received this, is that correct?
Yes, these were all in the works, uh, at our last meeting that we had with the Finance Committee, and, uh, what ended up on this is coming in at a little bit lower price to save us about seventeen thousand dollars on this. Uh, we had kinda rushed them to get us a price on this, and they came back and they said, well, we messed up, that in building the down riggers on the back of it, their price on that was about ten to eleven thousand dollars higher, and they came back and looked at it and said, no, we can actually do better with the trade-in value on it than where they were at, so that's what lowered this price.
Okay.
So.
Thank you very much. Also wanting, uh, counsel to know and understand that this piece of equipment would not just be used with the cemetery, it can also be used, um, helping out with the street department as well, with snow removal.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, very good. As this is a budget amendment, we have a resolution and then two bills in relation to this matter. We'll call for the reading of Resolution twenty-one thirty-six first.
Resolution twenty-one thirty-six. A resolution, the City Council of City of Sedalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual beds for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding the resolution that is before you? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Resolution passes. We'll now call for the reading of Bill number twenty, twenty-five dash one thirty-four.
Bill number twenty-two-five-one thirty-four. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six regarding cemetery backhoe purchase.
Do I have a motion for second reading?
Motion, second reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty-two-five-one thirty-four. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six regarding cemetery backhoe purchase.
Do I have a motion for final passage?
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding Bill number twenty-two-five dash one thirty-four? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Franklin?
Yes.
And Robinson?
Yes.
You have seven yes, one absent.
All right, bill passes. We'll now call for the reading of Bill number twenty-two-five dash one thirty-five.
Bill number twenty-two-five-one thirty-five. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a backhoe for the cemetery. Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the, well, actually, I need a second reading, motion on that.
Motion for a second reading.
I have a motion for a second reading, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, do you have any council discussion regarding that motion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty-two-five-one thirty-five. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a backhoe for the cemetery.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of this bill, do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that is on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster is absent. Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Bill passes. And thank you, Chairwoman Bogus. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairwoman Franklin, you have the floor.
There's one item for consideration through Public Works Committee. The staff will provide a brief update on the Washington Street Bridge Repair Project. We understand the importance of this project to the community and are actively working with the engineering team to finalize plans and move the project forward. Our goal is to get the project out for bid as soon as possible, considering all approvals we need from such entities as MoDOT or the railroad.
All right, Administrator Ward, you have the floor to make that presentation?
Yes, so, um, I've talked with Chris Davies, our city engineer, he did receive the preliminary plans, which is basically their initial design of the repair from, uh, HDR, our engineer, that is redesigning the fix. They, if you guys remember, had gotten the approval from MoDOT for that design. Um, where we're at at this point is with those preliminary plans, they hope to have the stamped final drawing for the repair done the last week of August, there's quite a bit that has to be done there at the end, um, they'll get that, so what we have is a structural detail at this point, um, and again, those, uh, final plans hoped for the last week of August. What those plans, uh, he said, revealed is, is there's about five columns that'll be completely replaced, in case seven columns, quite a bit of different steelwork where it's rusted or needs, uh, repaired, it'll have to be, uh, there'll be some cleaning and repainting of some of the metal on the approaches, and then the sidewalk boards will also be replaced. Now, this is a high-level overview of the repair, it's not what's gonna go out to bid or the very specifics of it. So when we get that at the end of August, we hope that it'll be a total bid package to get out to bid as soon as possible. Now, what we usually do on a more complicated project like that is, is we have the bid out for several weeks, so that we make sure and get, um, um, appropriate and skilled contractors involved in that, and then as soon as we, um, get those exact dates nailed down, I'll get those out to everybody, or we'll, we'll do a press release one or two, but we'll keep you up to date. It appears that the conversations that HDR has had along the way with MoDOT has sufficed them to this point, so we're not gonna have to go through another review process before it goes out to bid, which is really good news, because sometimes that can add another six weeks to the project, so that's, that's a positive thing to, to point out in it. Um, the, one of the big unknowns at this point is, of course, who the contractor will be, how long it will take them to do the repair, and then, um, at that very end of that repair, we will have to have the bridge checked again for its weight rating. So it's designed, that design that's there, and, and HDR is a, is a very, um, large bridge designer, they've designed some of the large structures that you see in Kansas City in interchanges, so, um, they're designing to keep the weight limit the same, we'll have to have that verified by MoDOT, um, upon its opening, so just wanna kinda give you all the, all the things to think about as where it's going, so that there is just a clear picture of, of where we stand at this point, but, uh, um, that is, that is the overview to it at this point.
Any questions from the council regarding that?
The only thing I haven't heard is it's okay with the railroad.
So the railroad, up to this point, what we have been told is as long as we stay on the approaches, they will be fine. So once we get that, that final part to verify that, then we're okay, so. So both of those pieces of information are positive.
Glad to hear that we're coming to that point to where we would be able to open the bridge back up, so. It took a long time, but there was a lot of entities that were involved in this, it wasn't just a city thing.
Yeah, we've had to talk to a lot of different, uh, engineers and MoDOT, railroad, all those different folks to, to make sure that we're headed in the right direction in the design.
Anything else, counsel? All right, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Chairwoman Franklin. Uh, now we have public safety. Chairman Scribner, you have the floor.
We have three items for consideration. Uh, the first one is, the Sedalia Police Department respectfully requests permission from the council to proceed with the destruction of certain records in accordance with the Missouri Municipal Records Manual. Records Supervisor Ellen Cross has verified a list of items eligible for destruction. These items include duplicates, are outdated records, no longer required for retention.
Let's see, do I have a, uh, motion and second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve this, uh, records destruction request, do you have any council discussion regarding that? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
The second item is the Sedalia Police Department seeks council approval to apply for the twenty-twenty-six Blue Shield Grant. This program provides funding to support law enforcement agencies designated under the Missouri Blue Shield Program, which the police department has earned. The department intends to use the grant to replace aging camera systems, car cameras. Uh, the total cost of the project is seventy-five thousand, six thirty, the minimum grant awarded is fifty thousand expected. Additional funding may be awarded, but is not guaranteed. Purchase and delivery will take place in the twenty-twenty-six year. Staff will return to council with the proposal budget amendment once the grant award and funding amount are confirmed.
All right, call for the reading of Resolution twenty-one thirty-seven.
Resolution twenty-one thirty-seven. A resolution authorizing the Sedalia Police Department to act as an agent for the city of Sedalia in the application process for a twenty-twenty-six Missouri Blue Shield Grant.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the police department to seek those funds?
I'll make a motion. Also, who?
I have a motion, a second, do you have any council discussion regarding that resolution that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Our third item is, the Sedalia Police Department was awarded eighty-seven hundred dollars through the Missouri Coalition for Road Grade Safety Grant, under the Missouri Highway and Transport Strategic Highway Safety Plan. The grant supports the purchase of the Tapco School Zone Blinking Sign with radar feedback to be installed on eastbound Third Street near Vranta Avenue, uh, targeting trafficking, traffic entering the school zone near Missouri Avenue. The initiative aligns with Sedalia's Safe Coalition efforts to enhance pedestrian safety in school zones. The total cost of the equipment is eighty-seven fifty-nine oh one, the grant reimburses eighty-seven hundred. Staff recommends a budget amendment of the amount of eighty-seven forty-nine oh one.
Okay, and as this is a budget amendment to accept those funds and then expend them, we have a resolution as well, two, it's two bills to approve here, so we'll start with the resolution first. Call for the reading of Resolution twenty-one thirty-eight.
Resolution twenty-one thirty-eight. The resolution- The resolution, the City Council of City of Soudia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2026.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as stated?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt and a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding that resolution?
Can you tell me exactly where this, where we're talking about putting this at?
I believe the, it was on Third Street.
Right to Sacred Heart.
Yeah, right around Sacred Heart.
It's eastbound by Vermont Avenue.
Chief Wohler, if you could come up and provide some clarity for Councilman Bogus.
Absolutely. It's going to be designed to put for eastbound traffic at Third and Vermont, so as it comes into Sacred Heart. And the unit itself will have flashing lights for the school zone, and then it'll have the speed limit for the school zone at that time of 15, and then it'll have an active radar that's solar powered that will show the driver their actual speed that they're going as they come into the school zone.
Okay. Is it possible for us to get something like that or apply for a grant, something like that for over the Hugert Hunt area?
It's absolutely possible.
Okay.
Corporal Sylvia's, has been working with the, the state to try and keep that initiative going and, and definitely looking at other areas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Wohler. Any other questions from the council? All right. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-136.
Bill Number 2025-136. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 regarding police school zone sign purchase.
Second reading.
I have a motion for second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-136. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026 regarding police school zone sign purchase.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster is absent. Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Bill passes. Now we'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-137.
Bill Number 2025-137. An ordinance authorizing a strategic highway safety plan program agreement for purchase of a school zone blinker sign.
Second reading.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-137. An ordinance authorizing a strategic highway safety plan program agreement, purchase of a school zone blinker sign.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster is absent. Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
All right, bill passes. Up next, we have liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have two renewals tonight. Nicole Walker doing business at Discount Smokes and Liquor at 2205 South Limit, Suite D for packaged liquor and Sunday sales, and Eric Brown doing business at Buffalo Wild Wings at 4401 Wisconsin Avenue, number 100, for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales.
Do I have a motion to approve and block?
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
A motion to approve and block and a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding either of those liquor licenses? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Do I have any miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator? Anyone have anything?
I'd like to say thank you to, I believe it was Sea Shift Fire Department for being out at Hubbard Park this past Saturday. There was a, a young man who did have an accident and they were right there. Unfortunately, he did break his ankle.
Did he break it?
He broke it, he broke it. And the parents were very grateful to have our farm in there to wrap it up. And when, when they asked, Mom, do you want us to call an ambulance? She said, no, I'll take him in the car. They actually picked him up and carried him to the car, so we appreciate that.
They didn't hurt, well, they were playing basketball together, did they?
No.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah. Tomorrow is Caleb Summers from Summer Insurance takes care of a lot of the senior citizens here in Soudia with the Medicare, Medicaid deal. And tomorrow's their customer appreciation. I'll be there with the Derek Car. I know Freddie, the fire truck, is going to be there. And, and one of the fire rescue squad trucks will be there, so if you want to look at those, come on out and, and I'm sure Caleb will give you a high dog.
What time to start?
I think, I think about 10 o'clock is when they're going to, 10, 10 to 2. I got to be there at 8, so.
All right, anyone else? All right, having heard none, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item on our agenda. This is the good and welfare portion of the meeting. This is a time we've set aside for residents of Soudia to address their city council directly. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, telephone number, and agenda item you wish to address. Comments must be related to items on tonight's agenda unless formal written request to speak on non-agenda topic was submitted at least two day, business days in advance. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please clearly state your name, address, for the record, when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with council members. The council chambers is a limited public forum and all remarks must be directed at the council as a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name or title are not permitted. If you wish to file a formal complaint, you may do so in writing through the clerk's office. Disruptive behavior such as shouting, refusing to yield the floor, or blocking the views of others will not be tolerated and violators may be asked to leave or removed by law enforcement as necessary. Your comments tonight will be a part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining decorum. At this time, we'll begin calling forward those who've signed up to speak. Clerk Myers, we'll go and start with the.
I have no one, mayor.
Okay, we have no one. All right, very good. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to move to closed session.
I'll move.
I have a motion and a second to move to closed session under RSMO 610 dot 021, Sections 1, 2, 3, and 12. Do you have any council discussion regarding that motion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
We needed a second. Was there a second?
Oh, yeah, we did have a second.
Who seconded that?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call. Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster is absent, and Franklin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, yeah, I know all about that.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second to return to the regular open meeting?
I'll move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster is absent, and Franklin.
Yes.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-138.
Bill Number 2025-138. An ordinance vacating an easement located in Track B of Park Hill, First Subdivision.
Do I have a motion for second reading?
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-138. An ordinance vacating an easement located in Track B of Park Hill, First Subdivision.
Final passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill Number 2025-138. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster is absent. Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion passes. Now we'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-139.
Bill Number 2025-139. An ordinance authorizing a gift agreement buying between the city of Soudia, Missouri, the Hecker Family Foundation, and Sue Hecker.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do you have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.